Alright, so Commissioner Mayor.
Present.
Commissioner Lazar.
Present.
Commissioner Freitas.
Present.
Commissioner Benson.
Here.
And Commissioner Ariaga didn't respond, so.
Commissioner Lazar is gonna lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes. I was not at the last meeting, so I don't think I can do anything here, but.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Caitlin, in the audience, did you hear a motion in a second?
I did, but I'm still not seeing anyone.
Okay. See, we just got a text that there's no recording, so please stand by for just a moment.
Recording's going now. It was just the lag.
So we have an approval moved by Benson, seconded by... Did we vote? Am I calling a vote? Alright, roll call or just consensus?
I think consensus is fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Kristin or Jessica, we're still not seeing anything other than the empty boxes. So we're not seeing the council chambers like we did for historic press. Sometimes if you unplug the camera and then plug it back in, at least that helps for me. Kristin or Jessica, we're still not seeing anything other than the empty boxes. So we're not seeing the council chambers like we did for historic press.
There we go. That's it.
Sometimes if you unplug the camera and then plug it back in.
I'm glad everyone decided to come.
That's normal. Yeah?
Yeah.
So when people call, they talk before.
Well, I called, well, I already called.
There's like... And she was like, "What time is it?" And I tried to be crazy. Oh, you don't plan this? You're watching it through Zoom, through our website, or what? Thanks. It's all you're going to see.
Technology is your friend.
Nobody else is on Zoom. I'm not on Zoom. We don't have any commissioners on Zoom. We're gonna see whoever speaks. So when Caitlin speaks, you should see her, right? I don't know if this is what we're supposed to be seeing. I don't have Zoom on my computer. I'll figure out what's gonna be the problem. Okay. So apparently Commissioner Benson and I were... Commissioner Benson and I were talking about this before the meeting because we're all masked and they've got a broad view of the room. Nobody can tell who's talking. If we can hear you, they just can't tell. So when you're asking a question or answering or making a motion, if you could indicate, I don't know, raising your hand or saying your name so that they're picking it up on the audio, that would be really helpful.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Yep, we can.
We'll work on this, you guys. Okay, so we had a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Benson, seconded by Lazar, approved by consensus. You all voted yes. And on we go. Yep.
Uh, so we have oral communications and if anyone's here to speak on behalf of something not on the agenda, although we cannot take action on that. Anyone?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'm delighted to be back in council chambers and where we can interact directly with the public and each other and staff. I like that better.
And it looks like we can move on to public hearings. There are no continued public hearings and a new public hearing is NCS Eureka Head Start.
Great, thank you very much. So I will share my screen shortly and if, when you do have questions at the end, yes, definitely speak up so I can hear since I can't see your name. Okay. Great. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. The project before you for your consideration tonight is the North Coast Children's Center, known as NCS Eureka Head Start Variance and Design Review Project, which proposes to redevelop an underutilized site with three new structures, two of which are two-story Head Start classrooms and one is a three-story office and community hub building and associated site improvements. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, my name is Caitlin Castellano. I'm a senior planner. So here's a bird's eye view of where the proposed project is located in the context of the city limits. Zooming in, the site is north of Highway 101, east of Old Town, and approximately three blocks south of Humboldt Bay on a property known as 307 N Street. The irregular trapezoid-shaped lot is located on the southeast corner of Third and N Streets with Myrtle Avenue as its eastern boundary, and the site is one block north of Fourth Street, Highway 101 South, and is near Little Fourth Street and O Street to the west. The site is surrounded by both commercial and residential uses and it is located between an area with lower-density historic homes used for residential and office uses to the north and east and higher-density developments such as the motels and other vehicle-oriented developments along Highway 101 to the south and the downtown core area to the southwest. The site is also not located on the local register of historic places, but it is located near several properties included on the local register, including the NCS-owned Head Start property located across N Street to the left at 304 N Street, which is also near the boundary of the Old Town Historic District. So briefly, here are two Google Street View photos of the site. The top one is at the corner of Third and N Street looking southeast. You can see the existing structure there behind the large palm tree, same on the bottom. This Google Street View is from 2018, so it doesn't really reflect the current conditions of the site, which is, the site is surrounded with a cyclone fence and the structure is boarded. So NCS is proposing to a three-phase project to redevelop the underutilized site with three new structures, as stated at the beginning of the presentation. Two are single-story classroom buildings you see on the left there in red, and one is a three-story office building on the right, totaling approximately 13,521 square feet of floor area on a 23,087-square-foot lot. So proposed site improvements include two playground areas, as you see in yellow, landscaping throughout the development, which is not highlighted, but you can see the individual plant symbols or the shaded green areas. Of the total plant count, approximately 85% of the plants are native to Eureka per cowscape.org and none of the plants are listed on the California Invasive Plant Council's inventory of invasive plants. A 21-vehicle space parking lot is proposed there on the bottom left-hand corner and zero spaces are required for new development in the Downtown Zone District. Also, 12 of the 21 spaces, it's the lower 12, are going to be paved with permeable paving. Additionally, there's two long-term bicycle parking spaces circled in red within the office structure building and then also 14 short-term bicycle parking spaces when 13 are required. Pedestrian-scale outdoor lighting will be provided throughout the development, either mounted on the pole, as you see on the screen here in the parking area, to provide illumination for vehicle parking and bicycle parking, or similar barn lights at pedestrian scale will be on the exterior of each building. A new trash enclosure, which complements the architectural style of the office building, is also proposed down at the bottom of the screen there, circled in blue. Additionally, I did want to point out that per the site plan and a little calculation I did, 40% of the site has permeable surfaces and I did speak with the architect about meeting the city's MS4 Stormwater Management Program requirements, which they're gonna have to go through for the building permit process and she's confident that the proposed layout of the site plan and the landscaping will accommodate the stormwater management measures that they're required to do. Also, there are three signs proposed for the project. This one here on the screen is their monument sign, which will be located on the Third Street entrance side for the office building and then two more signs with a similar sign copy and size will be mounted to the exterior building walls of both the Head Start classrooms facing M Street. And those signs do not require discretion or review because they meet all the science standards. Again, briefly, so their three-phase project. Phase one includes the demolition of the existing office structure and construction of one classroom building, the new sidewalks, a playground and landscaping. Phase two will include the construction of the second classroom building, a playground, new walkways and landscaping. And phase three will include the construction of the office building, new walkways, the parking lot, the bicycle parking and landscaping and the trash enclosure. So the site is located at the northeastern edge of the inland downtown zone district, adjacent to two coastal zone districts. The first one is the Office and Multifamily Residential Coastal Zone District, as well as the Service Commercial Coastal Zone District. The downtown zone district's goal is to promote the development of multi-story buildings built to lot lines to fully utilize available land and support a high-intensity economic and cultural center for the surrounding region. The proposed project requires a variance and it requires design review and doesn't require any other discretionary permits because the proposed Head Start classrooms, which is considered a daycare land use, as well as the NCS offices and community hub, family services, which is considered offices, instructional services and a nonprofit civic institution are principally permitted uses in the downtown zone district. So as stated before, it requires a variance. The project includes two variance requests, one for the construction of new buildings with a total floor area ratio, also known as a FAR, of 0.58, where the minimum FAR for the downtown zone is one and that's a 42% deviation, and two for the construction of two one-story buildings where the minimum stories in the downtown zone is two, so that's 100% deviation. So currently, there is one small 1,542-square-foot derelict one-story office building located on the subject property, which is vacant and boarded, and the proposed project will result in the additional 11,979 square foot of building space for a total of 13,521 square feet of floor area. And it'll add two more buildings, including one building, well, it'll add three, but there's one on the side already. And then they'll add another building that are three stories tall. So although the project will not meet the minimum FAR and building story standards, it will revitalize a vacant lot and increase the density and intensity of use relative to previous uses, meeting the intent of the downtown zone district's standards to more fully utilize the land. The project will also contribute to maintaining and strengthening the downtown Eureka as a high-intensity cultural center for the larger region, consistent with the intent of the downtown district. As described in the staff report, strict application of the development standards in the DT Zone District creates a unique hardship due to unusual circumstances associated with the property, which include the project site's location, which is within a newly-created downtown zone district and it's located on the northeasternmost edge of the downtown zone between a lower-density intensity neighborhoods in the adjoining coastal OR and CS zones and the more auto-oriented developments near Highway 101 in the inland downtown zone. And also a unique hardship due to the site's size and shape, which is a larger and more irregularly shaped lot than the other properties in the vicinity that are rectangular and generally less than 8,000 square feet in size. Therefore, staff believes all the required findings for the variance can be met and the variances should be approved. So for design review, also as described in detail in the staff report, the street-facing facades of the proposed development exhibit a Craftsman-style architectural design, which complements neighboring properties and contributes to Eureka's distinctive identity and sense, and unique sense of place. So the overall project design does comply with all the applicable design criteria in the municipal code as outlined in the staff report. Oops, sorry. This is the Myrtle Avenue view. And then two more views briefly is the Third Street View and the N Street View. And although the site is not on the local register of historic places, as I previously stated, it is included in Eureka and Architectural View, known as the Green Book, because there used to be a historic home on the site, which was destroyed in a fire and its front porch columns were salvaged and repurposed on the existing office structure, which was built in 1972, that you see here, highlighted in yellow. And those front porch columns are the only historic building elements that remain on-site. So in order to preserve the little remaining history of the site, the applicant proposes to salvage and repurpose the historic porch columns in an arbor, which will be located above two bicycle parking spaces near N Street in the same general location on the site as they are now. So for all these reasons presented in this presentation and included in the staff report, staff recommends Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a Planning Commission resolution approving with conditions the major variance and design review. And here is a suggested motion and the team and I, as well as the applicant and the property owner, are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys have questions for staff? Yes.
I noticed in the staff report that this was a part of the consequence of the 2019 zoning code update and I wanted to know how many of variances have we seen for similar requests like height, floor area ratio exceptions since the adoption of the new code?
This is the first one. So we haven't had any other variance requests that I'm aware of. Unless Kristin Getz is aware of any other.
Okay, thanks.
This is Dilo Freitas. I have a question that is partially for you, Caitlin, and then I'd also be interested to hear from the agent as well about the variance findings based on the size of the lot. Would this be available to other parcels in future or is it specifically tied to the location kind of at the cusp of this zone? And what are the parameters of using size as a reason for a variance in staff's mind? So that's your question. And then for Valerie, I'm also curious about, from the design perspective, why exactly did the size present a barrier to the design that could not be overcome?
So to answer your first question, the size is unique. The size argument is unique to this specific site, so it wouldn't be, you know, the zoning district-wide. And if you do look around the site, it is fairly large and it is irregular and... But yeah, the size argument is unique to this site. I'm not sure if you wanted to clarify, need me to clarify the question more since there was a second question there, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's enough. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Caitlin for your presentation and everything. Thanks. So like Caitlin said, the lot is not only large, but irregular and that was a big part of why it was difficult to fully build out the site. That's, that's the main reason, I think. The owners also wanted to have parking on the site and so the way we've set it up, it kind of shields the parking from the roadway as much as possible, but then also leaves room for some parking on-site and doesn't burden the neighborhood anymore with all the extra parking that would be generated there.
This is Craig Benson and I'd like to follow up with that question about, particularly about the number of stories. You know, what we're presented with as planning commissioners is that in the DT Zone, two stories is the minimum. So I guess more specifically, why was two, were two stories not possible on this project?
So the North Coast Children's Services, they have a lot of regulations around the funding that they get. So having a preschool underneath many different uses is not appropriate and actually doesn't work with their funding sources. Also, the nature of their funding is that it comes in phases and so the first part of the funding that they have available is for the Head Start classroom, which does not need to be two stories and actually the funding isn't really there to support two stories, which then would likely require an elevator. So those are the main reasons, I think, of funding and like the way that their funding works and then the regulations around the funding with preschool and security. You can't have a lot of uses on top of preschool for security reasons.
Thank you for that additional background. That's very helpful to understand.
Sure, no problem.
I've got another question. This is Craig. I noticed that there's 14 temporary and two permanent places to park bikes. What's the nearest bike lane, you know, dedicated bike lane to this site? How would people access this the most safely on bikes?
Yeah, sorry, I'm grabbing the general plan. The waterfront trail is only a few blocks away. You know, you have to kind of go west of the site and then north, kind of around, you know, the Pink Lady. And then, let's see. There is, I believe, let's see, Sixth and Seventh Street. And those are dedicated bike lanes, but you would have to cross, you know, Fourth and Fifth Street. They are planning to do a, it looks like it from the general plan, on E and G streets to kind of have a dedicated bike, when it exists, actually, to do a class-three bike lane across. So that doesn't really help either. So I would state that probably, nope, I'm sorry. I do see they're planning to do a proposed class-three bike lane on... What street is that? P Street? Maybe that is N Street right there, actually. I think it's N Street. For the N Street Bike Boulevard. The safest way would be to go to the waterfront trail and then go where you want to go. But if you're trying to get to the southern portion of the city, that does kind of prove a bit of a problem to cross over Fourth and Fifth. But once you do, you can get to Sixth and Seventh and those have bike lanes and then you can get to J Street from there. Also, G and E Street have some bike lanes proposed as well.
And I believe also that Myrtle Avenue has bike lanes, but probably not until you get to Sixth Street.
Great, thank you.
Kristin is correct. Sorry.
Thank you for that information. Just remind me, what are the ages of most of the clientele that will be using this space and how will they generally arrive there?
So the early Head Start, I believe, is children under two years old and then I believe that the Head Start is two to four. I might be a little bit off on that and Rodney or Lindsay from North Coast Children's Services can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong on that. But the parents pick, drop them off at the school and then pick them up.
Yeah, I can chime in, Valerie. So the Head Start serves children three to five and the early Head Start, that center would serve children from two to three years of age. Primarily, our parents either walk, drive, or take public transportation. And that is a part of town where there are really no childcare centers. It's one of the things we've seen in our community's assessment is a lack of childcare to that part of town.
Are there any curbside features that are, that make it a safer route for young people and families to arrive there?
There is a lot of street parking because it is a large, irregular lot. There's, there is a lot of street parking that's kind of out of the main flow of traffic. So that's kind of how we were envisioning that parents would be able to park on the street, walk their kid in. And then when the parking lot is filled, they would be able to, you know, perhaps turn into the parking lot and drop them off. And so just a couple of different options.
Good to know. Thank you so much. My last question is about visibility of the Carson Mansion and the library from N Street. Are there any points of view where some of those, some of the most beautiful buildings in my mind in Eureka are not visible to folks who have been able to see them in the past?
Like you mean, would the three-story building block the view potentially?
Yes, correct.
Well, I know that the neighbor to the south is in support of the project and they're really excited to see something happen on that lot, so I haven't heard any complaints from them and I think they might be the only people that might be impacted by that.
Can I assume that a mock-up of the, of the height will be put up at some point and there will be additional public comment on that?
I can put up a mock-up of renderings of the height of the building, if you'd like me to.
Unless there's an appeal of the Planning Commission action, this would be the final action tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to unilaterally try to direct staff to do that. I was just curious whether that's going to happen in part of the process. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. If, I noticed that there's a phased approval, partly it sounds like from hearing the applicant's agent. This is on the funding side of things, but with the phase, with the final phases incorporating the law. But with the phase, with the final phases incorporating the larger multi-story building, if that were not to actually proceed and they built Phase One, what would the outcome be of the permit in the long run? If they never pursued the later parts of the project? How are the conditions set up? What would be the outcome?
That's a great question. I know that in the zoning code, there are processes for permit revocation when certain items aren't met. I haven't gotten to that point yet. I would probably ask Kristin Getz to elaborate more on this. But I would think that if, I mean, it could be as harsh as you have to take the building down if they didn't complete the project. But we don't have any safeguards as a condition of approval in there. We are taking their word for it.
So I think if the, if either subsequent phase was not constructed, and especially the three-story building, then at that point in time when the property owner or the applicant had decided that that wasn't going to happen, they would need to come back to us to modify their variance somehow or some way. And that might include something like a text amendment to the zoning code. I don't know.
Right. I mean, the zoning code could, code could be different when that happens too. I guess my question would be, would it be appropriate? And I'd ask my fellow commissioners to apply a timeframe. And if, if so, would that be feasible, given the applicant's funding and the kind of, but if we did for implementation of the later phase? Yeah, I think that's something we should think about.
Yeah, it's something I was considering as well and during discussion, I think we should discuss it. So I guess we can move on to public comment. Yes, is anyone on that has comment for this? We could start with the applicant.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Rodney Owen. I'm the Executive Director for North Coast Children's Services. You know, I think, I don't know if people can see, but Cash had put in the chat that when we initially bought this property was before the zoning had changed. And our plan originally was to remodel the building that was currently on the site. And so I hope the council will take that into consideration that, you know, it is our goal to meet the requirements that the city set forth for the property and the zoning. You know, but the, you know, currently we have the funding for the first phase. You know, and it is our intention to complete the final two phases. But that is conditional on us receiving funding from the federal and state governments. You know, currently, I think we've all seen in the last year and a half of this pandemic, the impact that has had on childcare and families. And there is, does seem to be a renewed push on both the state and federal levels to provide more funding to, you know, increase the infrastructure. And so I am hopeful that there will be the funding to, to do all three phases of this. But yeah, I guess I would just, you know, hope you all will consider that in your decision-making.
Thank you for your comments.
And Madam Vice Chair, I don't see anybody else raising their hand in the Zoom.
Okay, well, I guess we'll bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, I'll start off. You know, I, I am just so delighted to see repurposing of this site. I mean, I've lived in Eureka long enough to, to see the derelict activities and some of the nefarious activities that have happened on that lot. And it's just a fantastic revisioning of that for just an incredible nonprofit organization that does great things. And, you know, these variances to me seem, you know, seem to create a unique hardship on the site. And they seem justifiable, you know, in my mind. And I, you know, I want to congratulate the applicant on getting the funding. It's hard getting funding these days, any days, and it's more competitive all the time. And, and I, I know that they have a commitment to getting the, the funding for the future phases. And so I'm delighted to see this kind of investment in Eureka happening, especially for underserved children from three to five years old. It's fantastic.
I'll just speak to that a little bit more too. You know, this, this building, aside from just, you know, revitalizing that derelict area is also going to bring a lot more traffic, which is going to continue, I think, to bring this site up and hopefully drive out some of the not-so-great activities that happen there and around there right now. So the increased traffic will really help.
Let me just further comment just on traffic in general. You heard in my earlier question about, about, you know, where will, where will people come in? And, you know, safe routes to schools are really important. And, you know, with that increase of traffic, I would encourage some kind of partnering with, with RCA and safe routes to school and just look at what that traffic volume is and, and look for that kind of partnership to make it as safe as possible.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, this is D-Lo. I think I'll weigh in, weigh in next. I think it's a beautifully designed project. I think it'll be really compatible with the neighborhood. And being right across the street from the library is definitely a good location. And I'm excited to see more activity on the street. But for me, it is a tough decision because we do need childcare. I was speaking with somebody today who was saying that only 25% of residents of Eureka who need childcare have their childcare needs met, which is intense. You know, that's really an emergency situation and we should be supporting people who are providing services that we need. But also, I think it's part of our role as the commission to guide the council's vision for our downtown and efficient use of our remaining vacant parcels. So I do really appreciate staff collaborating with the applicant to envision something that's more high-density and will have more activity on the site. I really do hope that this isn't retained as a single-story, low-density site in its entirety. And to that end, yeah, I would be curious to see if there's a way we can support ensuring that the three-story development does happen.
Steve's talking here. So I agree with D-Lo. I think we do have an obligation to try to make sure the vision for the downtown gets realized. And these types of projects are, you can have the death-by-a-thousand cuts if you give ground continuously on the density and the development intensity. Having said that, I do recognize this is an unusual-shaped parcel. It is the first of its kind of development wrestling with some of these new policies that have come. I think you can't regulate through code alone and ensure that development makes sense or is feasible. So we have a responsibility, the, the Design Review Commission has a responsibility to try to be reasonable. And in that regard, I'm sympathetic. I think it's a good project. I think part of the parsimony is, is related to its location, that being in the downtown is essential to making it more friendly or at least less transit-dependent type of development. We can't have our, the applicant fix the bike lane issues that exist. Those are not their responsibility. We need ways to cross Fourth and Fifth Street, and this project won't fix that. Being close to the waterfront trail, being close to the library, it's been mentioned already. Those are, those are huge assets. And they're in line with the type of planning that the state wants to see and is, is the way that you solve some of the looming problems, especially greenhouse gas-related. One thing I noted, I'll just bring it up now, is there was, there was language in the conditions, I believe, that said something to the extent of the windows would be vinyl or fiberglass, but depending on costs. And I, I think I'm not real sympathetic to waving the fiberglass. I think if they're going to do this type of development and try to marry it with the development pattern, it makes sense to use a higher-quality window material and vinyl is going to be, have to be replaced. So it's really not a fix. So I'd like to see that as a, a non, non-flexible condition. I'd rather just see it be fiberglass. And I'm, I'm open to hearing from the applicant's agent, the architect, about cost ramifications. But it doesn't seem like it's going to have a huge ramification on the first phase, which is what we're essentially have on the horizon now. I do want to mention, I appreciate a lot of things about the design. I, I think the fact that the needs bill salvaged once, you know, when the buyer occurred and, and keeping that as an, as a part of the development. I would say more importantly than that, the keeping of the palm trees, which is a hallmark of Victorian architecture. That is, those are major design attributes that I appreciate. And then I don't know a fix for, I think we heard it, we can't count on the funding. They can't count on the funding. We can't put a timeframe that's going to be sensitive to the reality because it would be prognosticating what will emerge. But to the extent that we can at least make this reappear at an interval before the planning commission for review or modification of the permit, I think that's appropriate so that we can have that reality check. Beyond that, I don't think I'm prepared to, to put an arbitrary timeframe on. But I would be interested in hearing more about the windows and whether they can be a higher-quality fiberglass clad design.
Yeah, I mean, that's our intention. It's just nice to have like the flexibility because the funding is not always flexible. I don't know, Caitlin, is there, are there requirements about the window height?
No, not the type, just that the trim went all the way around and it had a two-inch sill.
It's definitely our intention. We like to use, you know, the better quality stuff as much as we can. It was just mostly to have a little bit of flexibility just in case because, as we all know, construction costs have been really up and down and all over the place lately. So it's kind of just to have a little bit of flexibility in case something, prices go up again.
Yeah, so I would offer that we are being flexible and considering the variance. And that's a huge amount of flexibility. And the project's really not possible without it in its design. So it's not a large number of windows. The costs, if they really want to protest or if we don't want to apply it, that's fine. But I think we'd like to, I'd like to hear more about what the ramifications are under the current cost structure. Otherwise, I'm totally prepared to support the project with that addition of clarifying the condition language.
Commissioners, if I may also clarify about the timing and you wanting them to come back. The permit does expire in two years if the approval is not exercised. So that means a building permit has been issued. So if they don't get funding in two years and a building permit hasn't been issued, then we'd have to come back to you to either extend the permit or modify it then. It could be modified then.
It seems very likely that we'd be seeing this again then. I mean, we'll probably only be done with construction of Phase One by then, let alone getting funding. I don't know if the agent or applicant can speak to that.
So as soon as they start with their building permit, they'll be vested?
So I haven't checked back in with North Coast Children's Services since I talked to them last. But a couple of weeks ago, you know, we were talking about funding for the office portion already. So I know that they're working on it now. But like Rodney said earlier, there's just, you know, they can't guarantee it because it depends on a lot of different things coming together. So I know that they are working on it currently and working on the, the funding for the next, the early Head Start classroom as well.
Yeah, and I'll just speak to that. And we have, you know, we have been reaching out to AEDC as well as, you know, working and looking at federal grants as well as state grants. This winter, sometime between January and March, the state's supposed to be releasing applications for, request for applications on new construction for childcare facilities across the state, totaling, I believe it's $150 million. And so we'll be keeping our eye out for that coming, which we'll be using for the, you know, if we can get that, that'll, we'll be trying to use that along with federal money to do the second phase, which is the early Head Start, as well as looking for potential funding through the, you know, with, I think just yesterday, the infrastructure bipartisan bill passed the House. And so we do anticipate that along with the, if the second bill that's in the House right now passes, there's, I want to say it's like half a trillion dollars towards childcare and universal pre-K across the nation. So I do see that there's a lot of potential funding coming down the way that we'll continue to seek and do our due diligence to try to obtain.
So I, just to kind of refocus the discussion, in my mind, whether or not funding emerges for subsequent phases doesn't matter. You know, I hope it does, but to me, it's just, what's an appropriate interval to say? It's been X amount of years, the project hasn't gone into the later phases. You know, the, the larger building hasn't materialized, it needs to be revisited. That's the only question, not when or when, you know, if it gets funded. And yeah, as far as, as far as the project possibly expiring, if they don't pull the building permit, that's just standard mechanics. I don't have any concerns about that either. So I would just throw out there a five-year trigger, perhaps, if we don't see subsequent phases and that the five years can be pushed out another, however many years if they implement Phase Two. So if they get done with Phase One, complete Phase Two, make the five years go another couple of years, however, you know, after Phase Two is completed. It's, that's kind of complicated, but at least at a minimum, a five-year return, assuming, you know, it doesn't emerge.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. Yeah, I think that could be a good way just to check in on it. It wouldn't necessarily need to have a cost, would it? If they're coming just for a check-in, it wouldn't necessarily be revoking the permit.
Yes, there would be a cost for them to come back.
How much would the cost be? Can you kind of estimate based on typical fee schedules?
In five years, I have no idea what that cost might be. Right now, it would be, it would be 50% probably of the project application fee.
And what is that now?
It exceeds $1,000.
Okay. So I guess that's just something to consider is that's the, you know, impact to the applicant of coming back is not only having to come back, but also having to pay. But, you know, that being said, I think it does show that we are taking our regulations seriously and willing to enforce them. So I'm comfortable with it, but I think it is something to consider.
Yeah, I guess I'll say I don't have a problem with the B that might come with that. Seems pretty nominal, given the type of project and the budget. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion. Caitlin, could you bring the, bring the recommendation back? And also, I just wanted to thank staff for, you know, negotiating with the applicant to find a really good project. I know there was a lot of back and forth between the applicant and staff. And I appreciate the work that has gone into this. So thanks to everyone for pulling it together. So suggested motion, it's partially on the screen and partially not on the screen. But that's okay.
Sorry, hold on. Let's see here. I would have to go through the entire presentation to get it back, so let's see if I can just do it this way.
Oh wait, I found it in my, I found it in my packet. Okay.
Can you see it now? Can you see it now or is it still partial?
It's still partial, but I think, I think we found, I found a different way to do it. So I'm all good. Thank you, Caitlin. Okay. So I'm going to attempt to make this motion with, uh, Commissioner Lazar's recommended alterations. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the NCS Eureka Head Start classrooms and office building variance and design review at three oh seven N Street with the conditions that non vinyl windows are used in the design and the project applicant come back before the commission, um, at five year intervals for reevaluation of the permit, uh, until the project is completed as proposed.
I will second that motion. This is Commissioner Benson.
Do you want to roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mayer?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. Good work. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, B, Prime Exotics. And I'll send it back to staff.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Let's see if I can do this. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight I'm here, uh, with a project that is seeking the commission's approval. It's a conditional use permit twenty one six. Um, and it's for a cannabis retail facility with onsite consumption. Uh, the applicant is Prime Exotics and they are located at one thirty two West Fourth Street. Uh, here we see one thirty two West Fourth, just east of the famous bin, Fourth Street to Broadway. Zooming in a little closer until we get to our oblique view. Um, you see what the building previous looked like, uh, previously looked like before. It's since been renovated with an updated facade. Project description, um, the applicant Prime Exotics was approved through our two, two thousand seventeen RFP process for a retail opportunity. The applicant's proposing a cannabis retail facility uh, with onsite consumption, which requires a conditional use permit. Uh, the location is the site of a currently licensed indoor cultivation facility and commercial cannabis license is being processed separately. Um, as a staff report noted, we've got a summary of findings. The project is located in the Hinge Zoning District, um, which cannabis retailer is listed as a conditional use. The Hinge Zone District is consistent with the underlying light industrial land use designation. So the proposed use is consistent with our general plan. Continuing the summary of findings, the project location is in accord with the objectives of the Hinge Zone District as documented in the report. Uh, the project location and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity as documented in the staff report. And one more page of summary of findings. The use permits are discretionary actions subject to environmental review in accordance with CECL. However, the project qualifies for a class one exemption from CECL, which exempts the conversion and minor alteration of existing structures. We have seven recommended conditions of approval. Um, these are kind of boilerplate. So if you've been through this before, I'll, I'll briefly hit the high notes and we can go back and hit on any of them if there's any questions. Uh, the first one is that the applicant will obtain city and state licenses prior to operation for cannabis. The next one is the applicant will comply with onsite consumption policies that were included in the staff report as an attachment to. The next one, uh, item three is that, uh, they will enact and or utilize an odor controlled system so that no odor is detectable. The fourth one would be that the applicant gets fire, building, uh, police and public work approval. And also the property owner, number five, would install a security system that's approved by our police department. The sixth condition would be the requirement that any work will, uh, done, the applicant will obtain the necessary building and fire permits. And the final one is, um, our inadvertent discovery protocol. So if any, uh, cultural or historical artifacts are discovered through the process, the applicant will take care to notify the proper people. Uh, with that, before I put up a recommended motion, um, I'm open for any questions.
Do you guys have questions?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Topoluski, I'd, I'd be interested to know how many onsite consumption facilities exist currently and that have been permitted.
To the best of my knowledge, there's two of them that are in operation. And standard procedure has been with every retail facility we approve, right now we're also approving the onsite consumption, uh, functionality. That's not to say that, uh, they can just open up their retail facility and, and have onsite consumption. They still have to go through, um, the building department process and we have to come out and inspect it thoroughly before any onsite, uh, consumption can occur.
Am I correct? Is the EcoCan one on F Street, is that the first to be permitted and operating?
That is correct, with the second one being the, uh, Papa and Barclay facility down at the old KMR location.
So with the EcoCan, that one's in a much more dense situation. So I'd be interested in, have we had any complaints? Has there been any issues with odor control? Have they had to tinker with things? Any, anything that, that you guys have observed?
No, no, we haven't had any complaints, uh, with that facility yet, uh, or at all. I think part of that might have to do with when, when you're in a dense location like that and it's inside, it almost might be easier to control and, and capture the, the odor and do, um, implement air scrubbing systems. We actually had, when we, um, approved the, the Papa and Barclay location, that was a little more of an elaborate process because, um, theirs is outside, um, but their neighbors, um, it's kind of like a wetland area in the back and they only have one real neighbor that's kind of an industrial material yard. So they have a good relationship with their neighbor and, um, they understand that, uh, the odor control portion of any project is complaint driven. So the second we hear a complaint, uh, we make it clear to the applicant that, um, we're going to be onsite and we're either going to have to shut them down or we're going to have to make sure that the problems are remedied.
Okay, thanks. And, and my other question was with regard to, there's another permit being processed separately? Is that a permit for the retail?
Oh no, I'm sorry. That's just that the, uh, the cannabis licenses
Oh, I see.
will be separately processed. Um, we come to you guys for approval of the, the conditional use, but they, um, they already have an indoor cultivation license that's been up and running there for at least a year. And now we're going to be processing, uh, if this is approved, we'll be processing the retail license.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, this is Commissioner Benson. Uh, Mr. Topoluski, um, I just want to confirm, is attachment to the development services memo dated May twenty onsite consumption of cannabis and cannabis products, is that what I take as attachment to?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, down in general policies on bullet six, it says, um, licensed onsite consumption businesses must develop written protocols regarding how to assist incapacitated or overly intoxicated patrons who have consumed too much cannabis. Do we have access to those written protocols? Have, has the applicant actually created something beyond that bullet point that tells us when they stop giving cannabis to patrons and when they assist them when they're, um, overly incapacitated?
Um, right now, no, the applicant has not submitted that and that's kind of, um, influx. Uh, the, the previous two onsite consumption facilities have worked with our law enforcement, with EPB to, um, to come up with those protocols. And each time the documents get a little more developed. We're actually, I think you guys might be aware that we're in the process of a, of a cannabis code update. It's taken a little longer than, than originally planned for, but it, it is still coming down the pipe here and, and you guys will be seeing that. And our law enforcement folks have definitely wanted to get some of that information into our code. But at this point, it's kind of, uh, it's a variable. Uh, is, we definitely require, um, as a final step for the onsite consumption, we need to have some, some standard operating procedures, um, in place. But there's, uh, not really a, a specific criteria as to what that entails. Um, it's kind of, uh, in progress.
I'd assume there'd be something at the state level, just from the cannabis control board and it's similar to the alcohol control board that, um, writes, um, policy and procedure for bars and restaurants to adhere to. But, um, I guess it's not included, but I, I would assume that that, that's the case that the state has handed down some kind of directive.
Yeah, you know, uh, that's what I would have assumed too. And, um, when you do a little research, they, uh, they don't have exactly something similar to helpful as far as helping to determine or diagnose when someone's, uh, over inebriated or, um, what they do is just, they have a lot of helpful, um, information on the effects of cannabis, since it is kind of a, a new thing for, for folks to go out and legally consume in public. But, uh, yeah, unfortunately the state, um, they actually look to the local jurisdictions for, um, for a lot of the, the guidance. Unfortunately, they're, they're a little, uh, not as far into the game as we would hope because we definitely are looking to lean on the state for, for many things. Our code enforcement and, um, other aspects of cannabis, you know, implementation. As it stands right now, the state doesn't, uh, issue a permit until the city issues the permit. So they rely upon us to go through and kind of, um, uh, vet every site and make sure each applicant is, um, is up to code for the, their city code. And then when we implement it, then they can take, or when we issue a license, they take our license and then go to the state. Then the state shoots me an email to verify that, um, that's the case. So unfortunately, um, in the, in the near future, we're hoping the state, you know, comes up to speed a little more. That'd be great.
So this Commissioner Benson, what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Topoluski, is that, is that, and looking at, at, at the memo um, of May twenty ninth, twenty nineteen, that, that this, the responsibility for coming up with that protocol is put on the applicant, put on the business itself. And we don't have such with this particular, um, proposal at this point. Is that correct?
Um, it's actually more of like a hybrid, uh, between they, they present their, their proposal and then us, uh, our cannabis, we have a cannabis review panel, which is myself, police, fire, building and public works. Um, so certain areas like our, um, like our security, uh, plans, we lean on our police for that. And for, um, for the protocols for onsite consumption, we also lean on our, our law enforcement folks to, because they're kind of have the most experience, closest experience with their, they're dealing with alcohol and, and things of that nature, uh, and impairments. So, um, you know, it's kind of a new thing, like, like you, we've just been talking about, there's only two of them in the city that are up and running. So we definitely scrutinize them probably more than any other aspect of, of cannabis licensing. With the exception of maybe volatile extraction, because there's a lot of potential for, um, for danger there. But, um, yeah, the onsite consumption is definitely, um, something we, we have always scrutinized and it's, it's a give and take. We, um, it goes through iterations. Usually they'll submit a proposal or submit their plan. And, um, then we do at least one onsite visit, um, to make sure everything's up to speed.
I, I guess I have a question. I, is there a, an inspection on these facilities, Riley? I guess I'd, I would start with, is there an inspection of onsite consumption facilities on a more than prior to beginning operation basis? Is there an annual or semi annual inspection? And then if, is there an inspection for other cannabis facilities like indoor cultivation or extraction post operation beginning?
Yes. Yes, we do. Um, we do an annual inspection. Uh, some of the inspections are just done via, you know, reaching out and having conversations with the applicants. Uh, while others, you know, we, um, I work, I have a, a running meeting once a week with our code enforcement manager. So we kind of prioritize locations. Um, our code enforcement folks are really good about, um, going around and kind of getting a feel for who might need a, an inspection more than others. So we, we're in discussions weekly, uh, kind of creating a running list. And then every other Thursday, we have a, a cannabis review panel that we schedule either inspections for, for new facilities or annual inspections for existing facilities.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff? We'll put it out to public comment.
Madam Voister, I don't see anybody on Zoom raising their hand.
Okay. Sounds like it's coming back. You guys have any discussion?
I guess I'll start it off since I have a strong opinion about this. I've just read articles and read about statistics in the city of Eureka of, of being, having the dubious distinction of having more pedestrian and bicycle fatalities than almost any other city in the state. And also that the amount of traffic violation pullovers, um, is incredibly high in Eureka with the amount of people who are either driving intoxicated on alcohol or cannabis or, or other drugs. And, um, this is a problem for, for, for me to want to support, you know, this kind of onsite consumption when I'm not seeing a protocol that really gives me any kind of comfort that there's specific training in terms of identifying when someone has had too much cannabis, what that is. You know, we certainly have that for alcohol, um, handed down by the state and I'm, and I'm not seeing that. So it's difficult for me to want to support onsite consumption without, without some measure of care and assurances that, that there's some kind of protocol that I would, I would like our, our commission to review that goes along with permitting these. I'm been on this commission for a year and this is the fourth cannabis operation and I'm not a prude about cannabis. It's, you know, it may not be at the top of my list of what's greatest about Humboldt County along with redwoods and oysters and the ocean and so on, but it is on my list. And, you know, it's something that we can take pride in, but, but I also have a concern.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Benson, if I may real quick, um, I don't know if I've made this clear and I apologize. This applicant has not voiced This applicant has not voiced a desire to have onsite consumption. It just happens to be kind of a, the way we're handling the last couple of retail. In the last few that we've done, prior to my taking over the cannabis program, it just became standard practice to roll the onsite consumption aspect of the retail facility in at the permit processing time, at the use permit processing time. But I haven't heard from this applicant that whether they'd like to do it or not. And looking at their plans, there's no, it's a very small facility. It's only 225 square feet. And they don't mention anything about onsite consumption. But I agree with what you're saying. We definitely, and that's what I was trying to voice earlier, is we have started the process of working with law enforcement. And they, just like you mentioned, they have, they have protocols for impairment that kind of stemmed from dealing with alcohol. But there, there is a little bit of a crossover there as far as, you know, how you handle your clientele and how you detect and how you educate. So we're definitely working on, on creating a more documented approach to this. But just wanted to throw that in there, that this applicant has not voiced a desire to have an onsite consumption lounge.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Topoloski. I, you know, I read the staff recommendation that included both cannabis retail with offsite and/or onsite consumption of cannabis. So I just made that assumption that that was part of it. But in, in either case, it seems like the commission is being asked to greenlight that at some future. And I would, I would support this, this motion if they're with some kind of condition that at the time that it does go to onsite consumption, that it comes back to the commission? And that we get a chance to read, you know, what their, what their, you know, BMPs, what their policies, general policies are going to be relative to onsite consumption? For me to feel 100% in support, that's what it would take, something like that for the commissioners. I'd love to hear from other commissioners about this too.
Does Poplin Barclay or ECOCAN not have something on record as to how they're handling it currently?
They definitely do. I can't tell you exactly what their, I don't have the documents. I could pull their file up and, but I know that our law enforcement has been, worked with both of them intimately. And so once again, our cannabis review panel, we each kind of wear a different hat. So I sure wish I would have, if I would have known that this was going to be a kind of a hot topic, I, I would have invited Captain Stevens to, to join in because he's, he's our authority on that. And he's, he's a very thorough player on our cannabis review panel. So I'm sorry, I don't have anything right now I could, I could give you. But I know that both of those facilities have, have gone, go through, like I mentioned before, more scrutiny than pretty much any other license type or any other facilities in the city that deal with cannabis.
Is there, this Commissioner Benson again, is there a specific timeline for this? And it would, would it in your mind be disadvantaged to the applicant to, to put this, to extend this to our next meeting in order to, to have that conversation with the police? Or have some kind of policies written that we could review?
Well, I mean, I, I'm almost positive. Prior to my time in this position and prior to you being on the planning commission, the topic of how to deal with onsite consumption lounges was brought before the council numerous times and before yourselves. So I, I think it's a well-played out part of the process. I just, I'm sorry, I can't give you a history lesson on it at this point. I don't have the documents in front of me, but.
I would agree that it has been discussed. I'm just a little surprised that the city has come up with something to help these cannabis lounges, you know, write this policy. And if you have already two in, in place, it seems you have kind of a boilerplate to start. So I would suggest that the city get that going and be able to offer that. Since it's, it has been played out and you have the information from law enforcement and how they'd like to see it. So it just seems to me that this maybe got lost, but probably needs to be rectified. And it seems to me that there's already directive written. So it shouldn't be too difficult to take that and make it available to anyone who wants to open a lounge to set that policy. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm not sure what form that would take. Is it separate from this approval? But I, yeah, I very much agree. And I think for this project, since they're not proposing onsite consumption, maybe we could approve as submitted with a condition that if in future they did decide to undertake onsite consumption, they would either need to submit a plan to staff, to the satisfaction of staff, or have to come back before the commission to present the plan. I'd be comfortable with either, but I agree with Commissioner Benson that it would be useful to have it in writing as it is part of this protocol that was adopted when it was discussed by the planning commission and the council.
I guess I'll just weigh in. I, I share the concerns that I'm hearing. I diverge a little bit in that I, I trust staff to be able to implement a condition if we apply one tonight. But I think that we're overdue in maybe holding some people's feet to the fire as far as writing up protocol. I mean, these places would have complaints if they were operating in a way that created public nuisances in the immediate vicinity. However, it's hard to tell when EPD pulls someone over on Broadway, whether they came from ECOCAN or, you know, Poplin Barclay, whatever, you know? That's going to be a harder one to make those connections. So having the protocols in place, verifying the protocols are being used, having that kind of check before and maybe mid-permit, you know, is a way that I think we can ensure that we're doing something to address the concern. Because unlike alcohol, which does have a long history and lots of policy and lots of requirements that are well fleshed out. This is, we're just coming out of the dark ages with this stuff. And, and asking our ordinance or our staff or even an applicant to have it all figured out is, is kind of not real reasonable. But to the extent that an applicant wants to engage in this activity and get a permit, they have an obligation. How are they going to tackle it? And I trust our staff to be able to figure that out. But I think we should have a condition to that effect. And then, yeah, as far as the other ones, we can't do much about the ones that are there. But they have, that's why I was asking Mr. Topoloski about inspections, because there is an opportunity to tighten those types of things up in those, in those inspection contexts. And so I think it'd be unfair to single this one out just because it's the third one. But it is a, obviously a very important thing. And I don't know a great solution for it, other than making sure that people become stewards of like their clientele. And, and when you have a permit from ABC, you have an obligation to the greater neighborhood in which you're located. If somebody gets in a fight two blocks away, you can lose your alcohol license. I mean, that's the way that fleshes out in alcohol land. But in the weed land, it's not that sophisticated, unfortunately. So, yeah, I think some, a permit that would require submittal of a plan of operation, a permit condition that would require submittal of an operations plan for onsite consumption before initiating that particular settlement, I think is appropriate in all of these and verification by staff.
Yeah, I think that attachment to, that they included in the staff report covers portions of what you mentioned, Commissioner Lazar. And what I was mentioning earlier with our forthcoming code change, I'm, I'm bringing myself speed on some of the aspects of that right now. That's the next thing on my plate. And our, our folks at EPD have definitely been wanting to get things into the code so that it's a more formal process, kind of like what you're saying. Sometimes we go and with code enforcement, we find some violations. And unfortunately, you know, we can't really prosecute anybody because we're, our, our code doesn't include certain things. So we're looking at other aspects of our code enforcement as well. And definitely, I've heard Captain Stevens mentioning the onsite consumption and, and the tricky bird that you mentioned about cannabis toxicity levels and how to determine that and how to, you know, it, like you mentioned, it's, it's a different animal than it is alcohol. It's, it's got its own subtle subtleties and not so subtleties.
Commissioner Benson, yeah, I appreciate both what Commissioner Freitas and Commissioner Lazar have, have proposed or the language that you've used. But I could, I could support this if, if some of the caveats were thrown in there. I, I guess one that would go back to you, Riley, would be, is it, this is boilerplate language. Can we remove the onsite consumption part of this recommendation? Rather than just consider it, you know, greenlighted on anything that comes ahead of us with cannabis as sort of, you know, so basically to approve what the, what the applicant wants to do and what their intent is, is at this point? You know, rather than greenlighting actions that they may take at a, at a later time without necessarily having any, having that be part of our purview at all?
Well, I can assure you that the cannabis review panel takes the onsite consumption aspect of a project very serious. And there's no way that any of these applicants, you know, once they're approved for a use permit, it's very clearly informed or they're made, made note that they can't just start doing onsite consumption for, for a plethora of reasons. What we could do is work, like I've been mentioning, you know, towards this code change and, and modeling language that is more, more, has more coverage and more depth of, you know, because right now, basically, we have language to talk about SOPs and basically we'll scrutinize that. And like I mentioned before, it's kind of a give and take, a back and forth. But it sounds like what I'm hearing is the commission would like to see language that is more explanatory at first rather than generic. Is that correct?
For me, that's correct.
I'll just, yeah, weigh into and say, I assumed based on the way it was worded that onsite consumption was proposed. So it might be worth clarifying that in, you know, some of the summary of the project.
Okay, let's make a motion. Are we ready?
You want me to take a stab at it?
Yeah, take a stab at it.
Okay. So let's see here. I just have to get it up here because I can't see it on the screen. Uh, let's see. Okay.
Oh, you can't see that there?
Yeah, we get half of it, Riley. The screen's got a weird chopped off, but that's okay. It's not your fault. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to the planning commission, adopt a resolution approving with 210006, allowing cannabis retail with offsite and/or onsite consumption of cannabis at 132 West Fourth Street, parcel number 001024007, with an additional condition of approval, requiring that the applicant submit standard operating procedures for staff review to detail the protocols that will be observed to address patrons of the facility and intoxication, to implement the attachment to development services memo and the associated policies within. But in particular, those involving intoxication. I think those are the primary concerns. Yeah, okay, so.
Can I just clarify that a little tiny, tiny bit? And just say, in advance of any operation of said use?
Yes, prior to the permit being effective or, and operations commencing. Or maybe I can just say, prior to the permit being effective and onsite consumption operations commencing.
I'll second that. Want to do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayer?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to old business, there is none, new business, Valley Pacific Snack Shack Public Places Naming. I'm assuming there's a presentation on this, yes?
There is, Assistant Planner Jacob Muniz will be providing the presentation for you.
Thank you.
Can everyone see the presentation?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, commission members. It is a pleasure to be presenting before you today. I am here to present an application for a public places naming for the Valley Pacific Snack Shack. The public places naming is located at Highland Park, which is situated in the center of Eureka and surrounded by low-density residential development. As a result of a sponsorship agreement and financial donation to fund the construction of a new building containing both restroom facilities and a concession stand at Highland Park, Community Services is proposing the new building be named Valley Pacific Snack Shack. As discussed in the staff report, the restroom has been well-used and is not compliant with Americans with Disability Act ADA standards. The existing facility, the existing facility is proposed to be replaced with a new facility that will consist of an ADA-compliant bathroom and a concession stand that will have revenue-generating potential for sports runs with concession sales and city-programmed events. A sponsorship agreement is proposed between Community Services and Valley Pacific, wherein Valley Pacific has pledged a $60,000 donation spread over a six, six-year period at payments of $10,000 per year to help fund the new facility. In return, Valley Pacific has naming rights for the new restroom and concession facility with a sign displaying Valley Pacific Snack Shack. Eureka Municipal Code Section 152.15 prescribes the process for naming and renaming of streets and other public facilities. The Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission recommended the name at their meeting on October 28th. And now it's been referred to you for recommendation to council, whether the name, the facility as proposed or to recommend a different name. Following the planning commission's action, a report will be sent to the city council at a future meeting. And the council, the council may approve the commission's recommendation, remand the matter to the planning commission for future, for further consideration or make its own decision on the matter. The proposal does not involve a street naming or a facility naming or renaming. Instead, the proposal, the proposal does not involve a street naming or renaming. Instead, the proposal is to name Highland Park's proposed restroom and concession facility, Valley Pacific Snack Shack. There are no other streets slash alleys or public facilities in Eureka named Valley Pacific Snack Shack. So there should be no confusion with other streets slash alleys or public facilities. The naming, uh, naming the facility, Valley Pacific Snack Shack, honors the significant financial contribution made by Valley Pacific to improve the experience of all park users by having functional restroom facilities available during park hours and will be utilized by the Redwood Empire Little League during games and city events. Staff recommends you accept public comment and then adopt a resolution recommendation to the city council to approve. Here is the suggested motion. Community services staff and planning staff are available for questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple. First one is, will the facade, will the structure change at all? Or will it mostly just be reopened? What will be the actual modifications to the site?
I believe a new structure will be, will be constructed, uh, to, to meet the, to construct a new concession facility and, uh, bathroom.
Okay, and, um, this other question is actually for park staff. I think I saw Jeff Ramey lurking in there. I was wondering if somebody from parks could, um, give the commission a little bit of background on why it's so challenging to find funding for this site. Um, in particular, I understand it's due to the proximity of another state park and I think that would be an important piece, uh, for the commission to understand.
Hello, this is Jeff Ramey. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I'm on my cellphone. Um, so, and Robin Prossker is also here tonight and she can touch on some of this, is that in a recent, uh, large funding sources like Prop 68, uh, there's been, um, one of the requirements or advantages or disadvantages is, uh, um, the density of parks in the area. And so unfortunately, uh, Fort Humboldt qualifies as one of those parks and so it cuts down, it increases our park density. Sometimes that doesn't allow us to qualify, as well as, uh, median income, which is also surprising. And, um, there's a, with the Prop 68, um, there is like a program that we use and move a cursor around, we move it to all areas of the park to try to get the best results, um, to qualify. And, uh, our, our last two rounds of, uh, large funding through that grant was, um, we realized that our, we had better chances, um, in getting the funding from different parks based on those things.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
I have a question, uh, for Mr. Nunes, Assistant Planner Nunes. Um, if after six years at this 10K per year, um, if another sponsor, um, come, uh, you know, emerges, will there be a name change or is this, is this expected to be in perpetuity?
So it's limited to a six-year period, but the, the donation, the, the donator, Pacific Valley, has the option to extend it through another donation. They have a Valley Pacific Snack Shack naming to extend past the 68 years.
And following up on Commissioner Freitas', um, question about the facade, will, will there be s- some kind of large sign that says Valley Pacific Snack Shack and it will include their logo, their business logo and the like as well?
I'm not aware, but I'll refer that over to community services staff.
I can touch on, I can touch on that. Uh, we haven't gotten that far with the donor, um, but typically what we'd be looking at would be one of the smaller kind of bronze-looking signs that would be mounted somewhere visible, but, uh, at this time, we haven't discussed any sort of large overt sign that kind of names a whole building up them right up, right at the front. So, um, that would be kind of typical what you see on other, like memorial plaques on benches and whatnot, that kind of, um, style.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment?
Madam Vice Chair, I see no members of the public raising their hand.
All right, well, I'll bring it back here. I for one, I'm super excited to see a community member step up to support this project. Um, I've worked with Robin and Jeff on, um, Park and, um, I'm excited, um, it gives me a little motivation that there are people out there wanting to increase the usage of these parks and, um, the facilities that are there. So, good work you guys on securing that is, um, you should be proud of yourselves that it's not easy to get that kind of money out of people, so. Good work and I see that as a huge benefit to the park.
Yeah, I agree and, um, yeah, just want to echo thanks to park staff for getting really creative. This is a hard park to find funding for. This is my hometown park. I grew up right at the street and I still very much care about it. It needs a lot of love, so thank you for doing what you can to make that happen. Um, I guess my only suggestion, which I'm not asking to be part of any recommendation, but my only suggestion would be to potentially include, um, a water bottle dispenser or some sort of water, uh, device as part of the snack shack as the drinking fountain is inoperable and has been for many years. Thank you.
And recycled bins and garbage cans. But they know that I feel strongly about that already.
I could, uh, I could add that, um, we actually have a grant for outdoor hydration stations at a lot of our parks. Um, we're working on it right now, so hopefully within the next year, uh, you should find almost all of our parks having the outdoor bottle, water bottle fillers with the water fountain as well.
That's fantastic. Yeah, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Uh, Commissioner Benson, I'm also grateful, um, you know, to Valley Pacific and, and for community donors, um, uh, and, and for staff reaching out and developing these partnerships. Um, I'm delighted that this went before Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission, before coming to the planning commission. It is their purview and that happened October 28th and they, and they are supporting this. And, um, uh, and I, and I also, um, am delighted to hear that it's a small plaque rather than some, you know, very large, um, exuberant signage, so we're not sort of seeing a corporatization of our parks, but that we are acknowledging, um, what, um, you know, donors, uh, in an important way. So I, I can support this, um, name change.
Okay, I, I'll do it. Uh, and I'll also express my gratitude to staff and to Valley Pacific for finding a way to make this project happen. You know, parks are important facilities and ball fields in particular are hard to get and, uh, every single one is precious as far as I'm concerned. So I, I appreciate this, that end. I am prepared to move that. I think we have a motion here. Sorry Jacob, it's, okay, it's, it's almost visible, okay. I moved the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending, uh, I can't read the rest of the sentence, uh. Recommending that the city council name the restroom and concession building at Highland Park as the Valley Pacific Snack Shack.
I will second that motion. That's Commissioner Benson.
Do you like a roll call vote?
I think we can do that, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayer?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Reports and communications, looks like there are none. I'm going to move to adjourn and get us, oh, wait, you have one?
I, I do have a couple things. First of all, thank you very much for, um, bearing with us as we work on the bugs and figuring out how all of this is supposed to work for us. So I appreciate your patience with that. Um, just to let you know, I am going to be going on vacation and so your next meeting in December, if you have one, which I think you will, um, Kristin Kenyon, our principal planner, will provide staff support to you for that meeting, so. Um, other than that, that's all I had for you. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll move to adjourn and get us home in the weather. Good work, everybody.